Hi Nicholas.
Hello, I made it.
I know. I went to grab the laptop and they're like, no, he's here. I'm like, oh.
I'm good with both of them, Tom.
And two minutes, two minutes, two minutes.
Oh, this is Granite City Apartments, which I'm hoping they're gonna call Ward Five Apartments.
I think it is Granite City Apartments is what they're going with. I was just on knocking that neighborhood.
Oh, yeah.
This past weekend. Super cute houses up there. A lot of really cute lots and everything.
Okay, here you go, ma'am. Did you hear 2415?
Is that the sideways one?
Of course.
No.
What's that? Okay. It's my cellphone. Everyone good?
Good.
Okay, I will call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, September 10th, 2024. It is 6:00 PM. So I am calling this regular meeting of the Berry City Council to order. First item of business is adjustments to the agenda. I would like the manager to give a briefing towards the end of the meeting, probably under 8E, regarding some increasingly concerning behavior in areas around the city and talk to you about his response to that. So that will be under 8E. Anything else?
None for me, Mayor.
Counsel, any adjustments? No? Okay, under Visitors and Communications, anyone wishing to address the council regarding an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, I see no one, so we will move on to our consent agenda. Item four, approval of the minutes. The special city council meeting of Monday, August 26th, 2024. The regular city council meeting of Tuesday, August 27th, 2024. Do you have licenses, any licenses and/or permits, ma'am?
I have two permits. I have not had a chance to run them by Bradvale yet. One is the Spalding High School Homecoming Parade. That's scheduled for Saturday, September 21st. But once Brad is back.
Yeah, and the second.
And the second is... All right, okay, well, let's skip the second because I don't have it. That's not until October anyway.
Okay, well, okay, so you have not passed that.
I just got this from Keith.
Okay, you have not passed that by chief fail. So what we traditionally do is we will approve that pending police chief and manager approval.
Okay, we'll have a meeting prior to it.
Okay, so we'll be okay with it, city, but it will be contingent on the manager and/or the police chief signing off on it? Okay with that, counsel?
Yep.
Yes?
Just a thing on the minutes, the August 26 minutes, it has me as absent, but I was just on Zoom.
Okay.
Okay, physically, so you gotta put physically in front of that.
However you want to deal with that.
Okay.
Okay.
We have no contracts this week, so under item C, there are no contracts. And counsel, I passed around before the meeting Resolution 2024-15, which is the council authorization via Form PM-1 for the city manager to sign the Granite City Apartments Grant Agreement 07110-I-G-Berry-C-21. So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Take your pick.
Okay, yep.
Take your pick. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. Counsel, under item 4A, approve the city warrants, ratify the warrants from the week of September 4th, and approve the warrants from the week of September 11th, 2024. A motion would be in order, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. That one was easy. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. Ms. City Clerk?
Okay, so this week we have been bombarded with tax payments. That's a good thing. We've also been very busy with absentee ballots. To today's date, we have collected $2,247,000 in property taxes with $400,000 to be keyed in. It is in the safe, but it needs to be keyed in, leaving a balance of 32 for this quarter. The Berry Supervisory, Union Supervisory Revote is due for September 17th. We have sent out 726 ballots with more requests daily. Our last date we will feel comfortable sending out a ballot will be September 13th, Friday. Also, a pre-vote BCA meeting has been scheduled for Thursday, September 12th at 5:30 in Alumni Hall. And we will review the layout. We will review if there is anything to be presented in the lobby. I did put that out in the email, that there is a little pamphlet that would like to be placed in the lobby. And we'll just go over the schedule, the change in the checklist, and that is what we are doing this week. We are just gonna be focusing on getting those property taxes entered and into the bank.
Thank you. Questions? What is the delinquency? You mentioned the numbers, give or take. What does that translate to for delinquency rate, give or take?
Well, so far, nothing's delinquent because we still have a good...
Right, because it's not the 15th.
Right, we still have a good week to collect. I mean, 32,000.
Oh, 32,000, so small number.
Easy peasy.
Okay, thank you. Anything under liquor or cannabis?
Yes.
Go for it.
Okay. Normally, I'm very organized.
You're always very organized. You're having a busy week. It's okay.
Yes, we are.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
You're doing the 15th as well.
Oh, lucky for you.
The stragglers.
So we have two cannabis license renewals. The first one is Farben's Finest for their manufacturing Tier Two. We cannot release the areas of these places. And then the second one is Apple Soup LLC. They're manufacturing Tier Two cannabis license. The state is just waiting for approval from the council.
Okay, would you preside over this? I'm conflicted out on Fortman, so would you preside over this vote?
Certainly.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Needs to be a motion, a second.
Oh, I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry, I'm recuse.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion, there's a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well done. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Manager, do you have a report for us? We did receive a written.
Yes, I wasn't sure I was gonna be here, but I will cover it now. So just a couple reminders for the council and the public. The FEMA DRC Disaster Recovery Center is still open and functioning at the auditorium. It's in the basement of the auditorium. It's really well signed up there. Once you drive up the hill, it's seven days a week, 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So again, just wanna encourage people, no matter the breadth of their damage, when it happened, what it was. If you have any questions, you can talk to a real-life FEMA person up there, which is, I find, much better than trying to navigate through the phone. So get on up to the auditorium if you have been impacted in any way by this summer's events. Wanna thank everyone who participated and attended the exhibition game against the Bennington Martins on the 31st. We had a blast. The city's first responders team was really grateful for the support from the crowd. And it was a great event. It raised about $2,500 for the Berry Community Relief Fund, which will go directly to grants for residents who are struggling with flood impacts. So, great event, great night. The Martins enjoyed the facility so much that they have reached out to us about hosting some real home games against some real opponents. So we are working through that with them, and so stay tuned for announcements. It'd be great to have some semi-pro basketball at the auditorium. We'll try to, we're working with them to make that happen with the schedule. The Seminary Street Housing Project is moving along very nicely. We met on site on Friday with the developers and two of Butters. Actually, Janet, who's in the audience, was with us, as was Public Works. Chief Cushman, who's online, was there as well, and Brian Baker. So we were meeting with the Butters to discuss the current drawings for the building as DEW continues to proceed on their design. We've held several meetings with the developers internally, with our stakeholder team, to make sure. I mean, we're at the level of making sure there's a radius for Chief Cushman's fire trucks to pull out. So I think it's a great sign. We are looking to extend the due diligence period, just because it expired, I believe, the 15th. It's nothing is, it's not a concern. It's just a matter of, it requires time to get through. So we'll be coming back to the council. Once we get that extension, should be a pretty pro forma document to extend our letter of intent with them. But again, just wanna share with counsel that that is moving along very well. They're looking at 32 units at this point. And once we're at a point with DEW feeling really good about the plans, we'll of course have a formal briefing for the council about how that's looking. Right now, as I said, we're still, things are shifting. Like I said, they're looking where the fire truck's gonna turn. So we'll get it to you when it's a little bit more gelled, but really encouraged by the progress that we've had with our partners on that. We are, and finally, we're very, very happy to welcome two new members of the city's leadership team. Jeannie Galliano starts tomorrow as the new HR Administrator. She's joining us from Polycor Rock of Ages. She was thoroughly impressed to the interview team, which I sat on, with her depth of knowledge in the HR world. She's been doing HR going back to 96. She's done it all. She's done every part of it, benefits, payroll. She deals with six bargaining units now, so we only have four, so we told her it'd be a piece of cake. So we're very, and we're also very, very excited about her vision for recruitment and retention, which has been a challenge for us. So Jeannie starts tomorrow. We're thrilled that she's joining the team. And Tom Baker starts Monday, September 16th, as the Director of Facilities and Grounds. Tom has, again, comes with a really wide breadth of experience. He's spent 30 years working in Norwich, doing every job in the maintenance world. So Tom is gonna, I think, has also a great vision for upkeeping of our maintenance and taking a lead on many of our facilities projects that need to get done. He happens to be Brian's older brother, so we're happy to have two Bakers here on the team. And we're not sure, with Jeannie or Tom, we're not sure if either of them play basketball, but we'll let you know as soon as we find out. But very happy, these are two big holes. The HR administration position luckily was vacant, geez, two weeks, so that was very fortunate. Dawn and I were interim HR. I think we're the happiest people that Jeannie's starting tomorrow. And so I think it was great to be able to fill those gaps, and certainly people will come with a lot of experience in the fields that they're joining us. So that's it for me.
Questions? Yes?
I saw that Amay resigned from BADC, and I was wondering if there's more information about that. And I also saw the regional priorities email, and I was wondering what the process is, because I was thinking like infill and downtown development is something I would like to see on regional priorities, but you know, there's probably a process here.
Yeah, Amay, we got the Berry Area Development and Prospect Heights Boards both met Monday on the regular meetings. And that's, I received the notice right at that time when the boards met. I don't know much other than what was in the press release that she had. She was recruited for a new position. I know, I see Carl Rinker in the audience, who's gonna be interim appointed by the BADC Board. And so I don't have any other info other than what was shared. It was, you know, I think, from my perspective, it was a pleasure to work with Amay for the two years she was here. I know that certainly share the concern about keeping the projects afloat that she was a lead on. One of the issues, of course, is Prospect Heights, where she was doing a bulk of the work. And so we are looking to, you know, looking forward to see what the transition plans are on both boards, both entities, to make sure that that work continues, because it's very important work that's happening at both organizations. As for the regional priority list, you know, generally speaking, we need like a project in place. I think that what I'll do is, I think that's a great idea, Counselor Stockwell. I see, I think Tess was gonna try to listen online, and she may be, but what I'll do is she was a point of contact with CBRPC on the infill study they did. So I will see if that's something we can turn into an application for that kind of work.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, what is the status of the FOP contract, non-contract?
The status is that the... I could probably update you in executive session, but it can be very brief. Yeah, I can do that. Yep.
Any other questions? I mean, I couldn't speak to the question that you had, Counselor, regarding Prospect Heights. We're at a point with Prospect Heights where, in terms of, Amay did a fantastic job with the Northern Borders Regional Commission Grant. You know, if not for her, we wouldn't have received the grant. It's as simple as that. She did the lion's share of the work. Now we're in a different phase. We're in more of the due diligence phase. So we have, for example, Dave Sitchell, Steve McKenzie, Steve, Brian Baker. It's a different skill set that's needed now. I mean, I'm sad to see Amay go. I too enjoyed working with her for the last couple of years. But in terms of the Prospect Heights project, the city's partner, so to speak, on that, or the city's committee, is actually the Prospect Heights Development Board. And so we find ourselves in a place where, I don't want to say Amay won't be missed, because she will, but I'm not as concerned at this point in time as I would have been perhaps four months ago, as she was writing the NBRC grant. So I think we'll, I don't know if you have a different take on it. I mean, as you know, as we move towards choosing a lead engineer, again, I think Amay's expertise certainly, it would have been welcomed, but there are others on the board and the city's committee more than capable of filling that gap. Got a different take on it?
I think that's generally right, yeah.
Yeah, so, so like I said, we're sorry to see her go, but we certainly wish her well and thank her for the good work she did in Berry. As far as the, you know, the priority list, now that we're past the end of August, and you know, we kinda took our foot off the gas a little bit and left people alone. As you'll hear later on in the meeting, people have been working very hard submitting the Vermont Emergency Management Grants as well as the EPA grant. Now that those grants are submitted, I'd like to turn our attention back to housing. So I'd like to make, I know we have to focus it a bit, but I'd like to look to our North End and make that one of the Regional Planning Commission's priorities, is the rebuilding of the North End and refocusing on that. But, and we could certainly include infill in that if you wanted to, so I'm happy to work with you on that if you'd like. So any other questions of the manager? Okay, under new business, we have a, we were warned for 6:10, that's okay. We have a second reading in public hearing, warned for 6:10 PM, revisions to substantial damage threshold and underground tank requirements for the Flood Hazard Area Regulations Council. You had some materials on that in your packet. Ms. Shatney, how are you?
Fine, thank you. How is everyone?
Very good, thank you.
Second reading. We opted not to make any changes based on some of the dialogue from a couple of weeks ago. So it's back in front of you for approval, for discussion. Hoping this can meet with your needs, so we can proceed as needed.
Is there anyone either online or in the audience who would like to speak to this issue, to the second reading? No? No one?
Yeah.
Oh.
Peter.
Mr. McKenzie?
No. Peter, I think he had his hand up first, so I'm okay to go second.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Anthony, I didn't see you.
Thank you, yeah. I continue to be supportive and hope the council will approve it and go ahead. It would be a real boon for those folks who are on the border of having to comply with resilient expectations and lift the structure. So full speed ahead, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. McKenzie?
Yeah, I thought, trying to get too far in the weeds, but I happened to skim it, and I just don't know if there's an inconsistency or not in Section 5.01B3. It speaks of a five-year window for determination of improvements. And in section, and that's old language. And then in Section 8.17850, it speaks of three years, and the three years is the new language. I'm suspecting that's an inadvertent glitch, but I would defer to Janet. I just happened to spot it. I just thought.
No, thank you.
Maybe more house cleaning than anything else.
No, thank you for pointing that out. In fact, the current regulations speak to a five-year permit, 60 months. And most permits are three years now, as like our zoning and our building. So that is a discretion, sorry, discrepancy. We should probably correct tonight. Three-year permits instead of five-year permits, and that goes along with state law.
Counsel, your page 20, your packet 27, reference 24 on the actual ordinance, Section 501B, Section 3. You'll change where it says five, the number five. We'll change that to three, correct, Janet?
Correct.
So that will be the number three instead of the number five, which was, I wouldn't consider that substantial because the intent has always been to mirror the state.
Right.
And that's been very clear in all of the discussions that we've had. So I don't know if you have a different opinion, Madam Clerk, but, okay, well.
I consider it more house cleaning than anything else.
Okay, and I'm sorry, Steve, the other section was?
817, 817 subdivision K.
It already says three.
Number 50, but that one already says three.
244.
Yeah, 8.17A50.
The third line in there, it says adoption of this bylaw, the cost of which over three years or over the period.
So that's correct.
Yeah.
So that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Needs to be fixed in the first one.
So there will be, so the proposed, what we're proposing, counsel, is one change to Section 501B3. Change numeral five to numeral three, consistent with the discussions that the city's had all along.
Which, as you've stated, does not change what material we were trying to accomplish tonight.
Anyone else wishing to comment? Counsel, if you're so inclined, a motion acknowledging the second reading would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there discussion? This is, this is great. Thank you for doing this. Thank you, Janet, for all of your hard work. We recognized very early on, you know, the problems that our old ordinance was creating for folks because we hadn't updated that number for 15 years. So it was kind of a problem. So thank you very much for shepherding this through. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel.
Pat Moulton.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. They didn't make you interim HR Director?
That was shocking.
Not for lack of effort.
She pulled out her pitch board and said, would you like to ask again? Are there any more Bakers you can hire and make it a Baker's dozen? Sorry, that's the best tumor I have. Don't give up my day job, right? Well, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here in front of all of you, and I believe you have in your packet a PowerPoint that I put together about the EPA grant. And Nicholas, I see, is pulling it up. Thank you very much, and...
You go on too far. Pat, I just, I don't want to forget to say thank you.
Well, you're most welcome.
This was, this was an incredible effort, and you know it was.
Yeah.
You're not someone who gets... It takes a lot to knock you off your game.
Thank you.
But towards the end, I would read your emails as you asked questions, and I'm like, okay, I'm really careful how I answer this. You were working very hard.
Yeah.
You know, I'm getting emails from you at 12:30 in the morning, so I just want to say thank you, not just to you, but to everyone who put this grant together. I mean, I think it, I think it came out better than we thought it would in terms of how everything worked together, and we owe a debt to a lot of folks, so thank you.
Well, thank you, and I did not do this alone. I have to give Angie Harbin and Skylar Anderson at Downstreet a ton of credit, as well as Michelle Braun and Josh Jerome from the City of Montpelier. It was the, really, the five of us, yeah, who were trading gazillions of emails and vacations in between where other people picked up the ball and kept running with it. But it, I'm pleased with the result, and I'm, I've got fingers, toes, eyes, legs, everything crossed that putting as much good karma vibe or whatever we can out there, that EPA will see this in a favorable way. And I also have to give some credit to former Mayor Hemrick, who originally sent me the email about these EPA Community Change Grants. And I originally looked at it and said, oh my God, that looks like a novel. But in the end, we decided it was worth pursuing, so. I will whip through this, and please holler if you have any questions, but going on to the first slide, if you would, Nicholas, please. The funder is the Environmental Protection Agency. There is $2 billion available nationwide. It is on a rolling application, as the mayor observed in the, or I guess it was you, Nicholas, in the article today in the Times Argus. They have awarded over $5 million already, and we worked with a bunch of technical assistance advisors or providers who were contracted by EPA to work with applicants to help get them to the finish line. And they kept pushing us, pushing us, pushing us to get it in before July 31st, get it in before August 15th, because they were fairly confident that the funds are gonna be fully committed before even the grant deadline arrives. So the lead applicant is Downstreet Housing and Community Development. And I would say it took us a long time to find a lead applicant. We went through a number of community-based organizations. Were very close to working with Vermont Housing and Conservation Board, only to find out they did not qualify as a community-based organization. So in the end, Downstreet stepped up. We're thrilled at that. And it's important because the applicant needs to not just be a community-based organization, but has to have the fiscal and management experience to manage large grants. And by large, 20 million is large. And, you know, we had talked to Capstone initially because this was so much their wheelhouse, but they would have had to change their, oh, it's their funder of record, which I'm forgetting the term of art now, because their budget is around 20 million. And this would have surpassed their annual budget, and they would have had to shift from Agency of Human Services to EPA, which made no sense for an organization like Capstone. But we're pleased that Downstreet came through. They do have the experience. They do have the knowledge on how to manage multiple projects within a very large grant, and my hat's off to Angie and her board for stepping up. The City of Berry is the statutory partner. Statutory partner is a term of art within EPA. You must have a community-based organization and a statutory party to, a partner to apply. And then the collaborating entities, which are what we might refer to as sub-grantees, are the City of Montpelier and the Friends of the Winuski. We did finally get this in on August 20th, and we're holding our breath and waiting to see. Initially, they thought it would be a two-month turnaround, but when I asked, that was, it was unknown. So we could hear, as I believe it was you said, Nicholas, two weeks, or I, it probably will be before the end of the year because this is a Biden administration initiative, and I think the intent is to get these awards made while he's still in the White House. So the goals of the grant, if you would, are supporting disadvantaged communities, as, and again, that's sort of a term and part in EPA. And all of the City of Berry, all the census tracts are disadvantaged, and then there's one in Montpelier that meets that requirement. And there's a lot that goes into what disadvantaged community is, how that is defined, and you have to be a disadvantaged community to apply or have a disadvantaged census tract. It's EPA, so polluting prevention, reducing and preventing prevention is key, but also building resistance against climate change. And it says in this application more times than I can count, "climate change-induced flooding," because that's what it is. And it says in this application more times than I can count, climate change induced flooding, because that's what it is. And then also they want to see meaningful involvement in government processes by otherwise disenfranchised, um, or that's my word, otherwise non-participating residents to, to engage with the public process, engage with these developments and know what's going on. Obviously another goal is expanding access to high-quality jobs. Uh, that was an element of one of the strategies. And then, um, also making sure that the people who most needed are benefited by the application. I, I think we hit all those marks pretty closely with this application, given that we're talking about replacement housing and, for folks who are flooded and, and especially people in a fairly high, low-income area. Stop if you have questions anywhere in between. Um, next, if you would, yeah, thank you, Nicholas. So the application's pretty queer, clear. You have to meet at least, um, one of eight strategies. Um, we chose strategy one, green infrastructure and nature-based solutions. And strategy two, energy efficient, efficient housing or healthy and resilient housing and buildings. There were at one point, I don't know, fifteen different ideas we had for this application. Um, realizing there wasn't enough money for fifteen ideas and also lead applicants being very clear, keep it simple. Uh, we can't do fifteen projects. Let's look, focus on, on the few that we really need. So we really narrowed it down to where we ended up. Further, the projects must be completed in three years. That's the kind of thing that keeps me a little bit nervous. Should we get funded? Back to Prospect Heights and, and the permit process and things of that nature. And we must commence the activity between, within a hundred and twenty days of award. That doesn't make me nervous because there's a lot that constitutes commencement. Um, and I'm assuming by the end of the year, so that gives us some time to move forward with the due diligence and et cetera that, uh, Barrier Development Corporation is doing. And we really focused on replacement housing and housing and flood mitigation as some of the best, um, options for Berry. Um, and as I say, we needed a lead applicant who could manage these kinds of grants and these projects. So the specific elements of this grant, if you would, the next slide, please, Nicholas. It's a total of twenty million dollars. We rounded up, um, because don't leave money on the table. Amazingly, no match required, which that is a rare finding in a federal grant. So we have the following elements, ref, restoration of riparian buffer. That's what EPA is looking for in their, their various strategy. And that's going to happen on the proposed buyout sites, whichever end up being fully, uh, processed through the buyout process. And that involves plantings to, uh, sequester greenhouse gases, but also to help with erosion. And we also hope to design, pocket park is not the right word, but ability to have paths, dog walking, things of that nature in many of these sites, because there's going to be several clustered sites where you could build a quasi-park. There's nothing to prevent us from going back later to finding other funding to actually make it into a park, which I know will be key because of the Wabi Park project. We're going to remove the three dams that the council had already approved, along the Winouski River that the Friends of the Winouski has been looking at. Friends of the Winouski is doing the riparian buffer restoration too. And then construct a thirty-unit multifamily affordable housing on Seminary Street. You're quite familiar with that project. Uh, this funding will augment, but that project is not dependent on this funding, but this funding will add uh, to some more of the climate change potential of that project. Then also fund the extension of infrastructure to the Prospect, Prospect Heights development. Um, and I noted in the PowerPoint, the strategies that that meets, um, here in the, in our EPA application. The, as you know, uh, there is already the MBRC grant. You talked about that a minute ago. This sort of closes the rest of that funding gap, uh, to make that infrastructure happen. And it's infrastructure in a supportive affordable housing is how we phrased it in the application. And then after the infrastructure is complete, Downstreet's going to build nine single-family net zero, uh, modular homes on that property for sale with flood displaced residents having first priority. Um, and then also there will be four, um, non, or I think that's on the next page, but yes, I think it is on the next page. Yes. So the next slide is four single-family units, net zero, per, and all these are permanently affordable, I should say. Um, energy efficient, same type at Wabi Park. Um, we looked at whether we could fit more than four, but between landscaping, ex, um, some distance between houses, four was, uh, the number we ended up at. And again, those would be sale at affordable. We're talking between a hundred and a hundred and fifty to a hundred, a hundred, to a hundred and twenty-five at Wabi, a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five at, um, Prospect Heights. Uh, and again, priority for flood victims. And, I mean, when I say affordable, these are not being manufactured. That's the first thing my partner said, who's building them for that price? And it's like, nobody, uh, but we're subsidizing them through this grant. So that's how this grant is so key to making this a housing, housing affordable. And then in the City of Montpelier, they want to extend their wood district heat down Elm Street to pick up both commercial and housing projects, one of being, um, Downstreet's residential buildings on Elm Street. And then assess the downtown commercial district for how to make them more flood resilient, maintain their historic preservation status, how to get heat and hot water out of the basement. Um, and that's key for, for Montpelier. So next slide is the outcomes that we had to show to, to EPA in the application of lowering the flood elevation. And we don't know exactly how much flood elevation, elevation will be lowered through the dam removal, but we know it will be. And, and also the buyouts and reconnecting to the, to the river will lower, uh, the flood elevation. We're going to be reducing erosion, erosion on those sites and sequestering greenhouse gases. That was estimated according to this, it's a cool little calculator where you can estimate how much carbon you're sequestering. And, uh, sixteen tons a year from just planting trees, which I thought that was a lot. Um, then greenhouse gas removal by switching to energy efficient homes, moving off fossil fuels onto energy efficient solar and even electric and particularly since Green Mountain Power, I believe it's eighty percent of their electric portfolio is renewable. So that's an estimated, if you, if you figure we're building, um, forty-four housing units and we're, well, actually I think we based that on fifteen, fourteen housing units. That's twenty-nine hundred tons of greenhouse gases a year. And then based on the amount of fuel used by the buildings in Montpelier, that's another twenty-seven hundred tons per year, which I think is, is impressive. Um, I'm sure there's bigger and impressive numbers, but then also a big piece is mitigating the environmental injustice that has happened to the people living in the North End by the fact that they're living in flood-prone areas which are affordable. And we're moving, hopefully moving them out to safe and resilient area, um, parts of the city. And then overall increasing, increasing the community resilience. Um, we hope that we get a positive result and I think, yes. So if and when funded, it is a start to get Berry moving in the right direction. Um, it's certainly not filling every need, but it's a start. It's a place to begin. If it's not funded, we have a written plan now that we can go seek additional funding sources. We don't have to rewrite this again. Um, and again, I would just add that the key writers and collaborators are Angie, Skylar, Josh and Michelle, who, um, we became very good friends at all hours of the night, um, as we were finishing this, this up. And, uh, managed to not swear at each other, which was pretty amazing. So, um, but no, it was a, it was a great group. We worked very well together. And I, I know when we get this application, we will work well together to make sure we carry it off. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have. I brought the NOFO with me. I actually have the narrative too and the budget, should you need it.
Yes, Counsel, why don't you add?
Well, if there was no swearing, then.
Yeah, then it couldn't have been.
It can't be that good of a proposal. No, my question is, and this might be jumping ahead too far, so it's okay if we don't like know the details of this. But in giving priority to flood victims for these projects, is, are we imagining that they'll more or less just be able to check a box when they send in their application for these houses? That like, yes, I was flood impacted or just, do we know how that's going to work yet?
We don't know how that's going to work, uh, counselor, but I believe it will be something like that, that we would verify with Janet, was this a buyout? Were these people actually displaced? Um, and, and I will say the single-family house, houses, we know we can give priority. Angie's got to look at the Fair Housing Act.
I remember her saying that last time.
We're not going to violate any aspect if we need to give priority to those folks in the apartment building. But, um, we, we think we'll do hopefully pretty well with those fifteen anyway, or fourteen houses, fourteen, thirteen. Yep. So.
Great. Thank you.
Yes.
And should it be approved? How much flexibility is there within the, the strategies? I assume that because it's such a big project, that things are fairly flexible.
Well, you, I don't believe you're allowed to say, hey, wait, instead of strategy three, we're going to do strategy four. Um, but clearly if we find out, let's say, for example, there's some glitch and we can't build every unit. Um, we, operating our technical assistance providers, we're saying it's easier to return money than try to get more. Flexibility, I'm assuming there's not a lot because there wasn't a lot of flexibility in the application process. We had, I would say, somewhat frustrating experience with our technical assistance providers at sometimes trying to get answers. And often it was, nope, it's what it says in the application. Just do what it says in the application. So I don't deem EPA to be the most flexible agency, but it, I would think it would depend, Counselor Stockwell, if, if you had anything in mind, maybe we could.
I have some concern about having the city online for the infrastructure for Prospect Heights, especially because I'm in Ward Three and Center Street floods every time it rains because it needs new infrastructure. So not to save that neighborhood by making those people safe who already live there and have homes to create new homes, which, you know, I don't know how that's going to pencil out in terms of, like, will it create enough taxable income? And that depends on how many houses you can actually build, which we don't know yet. So those things concern me. And what is, and so the city, um, has a, has an, an option to buy Prospect Heights.
It's my understanding.
But that.
Correct.
Uh, yeah, so Prospect Heights Development Board has an option to purchase the property and it, and that option may be assigned to the city.
Yep. Counsel actually voted, that was in our packet, quite a number of weeks ago.
Yes, I remember that.
Voted to approve it. So.
To approve that option, yes, I recall.
That's correct.
But should, let's say the due diligence comes back and said, says we can't do a hundred and twenty-eight units, we can do eighty-five units. And therefore there's a discussion about maybe reducing the number of units that we, the single-family units we might do. I would think there could be some flexibilities to say, well, instead of doing them here, we're going to do them over here. Um, where there's, as long as it maintains meeting the strategy and meeting the goals, I think there's probably that degree of flexibility. Or if we ultimately say we can't build all these units and we have to turn money back, which would be a shame. I would hope we could hustle and say.
We have a place.
We have another place. Right. Yep.
Yes.
Hi. Um, when you were with us last, there were some real concerns about the number of grants that this, that were being awarded under this program. Have the prospects for that improved at all?
No, they, at one point we're hearing they were getting a thousand applications a week. Um, it's very, very competitive. And, um, that's why we, we had to hurry up and get the thing in when we did. But I don't think we compromised on quality by doing that. I think if the longer we waited, the less likely it would be. And even now, who knows? We have asked our congressional delegation to weigh in on, in support of the application. Um, I hear there were a couple other cap, applications, maybe from Vermont, but I heard one of them didn't make it. So I don't know who our competition is from Vermont or, or nationally or Northeastern, but, um, this is the nature of grants, you know, as, as you well know, it's, it's, it's hard to compete. And this is a large one, but there's two billion dollars nationally. I mean, I hope that that's, that fact can, can weigh in our favor as well as the fact that we have been over and over, multiple times hit by this flooding. It's obvious that we have to change. And the very nature of community change says that this, this community is ready to say, okay, we've got to move away from the rivers. We've got to find a more resilient way to be. But the competition is definitely steep. So I, I'm, I'm hopeful because it's better to be hopeful, but who knows?
Yeah, a brief, sorry.
It was odd the way that went down because in July, early July, when we first were looking at this, they hadn't awarded.
Anything.
Anything. And it went from zero to a hundred
Yeah.
in thirty days. And they weren't even getting the applications in at that point. So.
And at that point too, we were hearing that there weren't any applications that were deemed appropriate to even submit.
Right.
And so that we got to that point, I think, is helpful. I attended a workshop in Manchester, New Hampshire. Uh, I believe it was late July that, um, there were communities there who were just coming in to find out about the program. And I was the only one asking questions and felt kind of like nobody else got a question. But, um, so I felt good that we were well ahead of that game and that I think a lot of people left that going, well, you know, why bother? Because it's a big lift. I mean, Plainfield would be a great community to come after this grant, given what happened to them. But, and I've talked to their grant writers and said, you know, I just, it's going to take you three months minimum to get this together. And I just don't think, you know, unless you have something already on the docket, you know, or in, in, in the can, it's not going to work. But, you know, I, I hope I'm wrong. I hope there's money distributed equitably around the country, um, based on good projects that were submitted, but we'll find out.
Yes.
Yeah, just a follow-up question. Uh, based on the grants that have been awarded out so far, is this the type of grant where they might award, do a partial award based on pieces of the project or amount of money?
Yeah, they, the, the NOFO says they could do partial awards. If there is inadequate to fund all of the grant or that there are elements that they didn't feel fit the need well enough. So, yeah, that's my hope is we'll see something if, if, uh, not the entire project, but I'm really hopeful for the entire project.
Anyone else? It was great work. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Deering. Is there anything that you'd like to, would, if you could have added to this grant that you would have liked to?
Yeah. I, Nicholas and I talked about improvements at the Bariad as a, uh, regional shelter because that is definitely one of the elements of the, of the grant. But the time it would have taken to develop, what would the non-fossil fuel source be? How would it be built? The engineering studies, have the, the, the cost estimates in time to get this in wasn't going to, wasn't going to happen. Um, what else did we look at? We looked at possibly a second, well, I originally approached Angie thinking, well, could we do another thirty-plus unit? Multiple, multifamily housing unit. And, and, you know, she was pretty clear, that's going to suck up every penny of twenty million dollars and then some. So if we wanted to do anything else, that wasn't going to happen. We, we talked about maybe looking at, um, bridge elevations, but felt, you know, the hazard mitigation monies could come in to cover that. I'm trying to think of what else. I had a huge, long list at one point, but, um, we also talked about trying to talk with Berlin and, and get them engaged and looking at alternative locations for mobile home park as an example. Uh, but the time factor started really pushing us. And plus, don't do so many projects was, was good advice, I think we got from various of the lead applicants we talked to. So.
You say that this gave us a good opportunity to kind of look at some projects later down the road that we can then apply for?
Absolutely, absolutely. I think, I think the discussion earlier about, and, and that's kind of my thing is, okay, what's next on the housing agenda? Um, that we can be looking at too, because this is only going to, you know, be a drop in the proverbial bucket of the housing that's needed. And I think just looking at how, you know, the overall resilience and the whole watershed, in fact, we're trying to plan an Upper Winouski Watershed meeting to talk about what other projects can we do around mitigation that can really start to bend the needle. And, you know, there's probably additional sites. I haven't talked to Nicholas in a while about if there are other people who pursuing buyouts that we could be looking at for, for actually developing a good, a, a park, a Wabi Park plus type of replacement somewhere. Um, that was one thing I, I really wanted to see is to, I would have loved if we could have built a childcare um, for low to moderate income individuals somewhere in the North End, walking distance. That was a hope that we could do, but, um, yeah, and so I think all those things are on the list for potential future opportunities for the city.
Just one last one. Um, so you talked a little bit about some regionalized approach. Um, do you know if there's any talks about working more of a regionalized approach with some of the watershed management?
We have, those are exactly the conversations we want to have, Counselor Deering, is, is pull like the river engineer, the watershed basin planner types together with the municipalities and say, how can we as a whole collaborate to bend the needle, I mean, starting at the headwaters in Cabot and all the way through. Um, and making sure we're not doing things that are going to make anything worse, but better. And I, as I look at just what I know is being planned in terms of what you're doing here in Berry, um, what Berlin's looking at and the AOT garage and the mobile home park and the Five Home Farmway that Preservation Trust is looking at. I mean, there, we're starting to see some, some. to see some, some decent reconnection with the river happening, but again, it's, it's a drop in the, in the bucket. And, you know, talking to Michelle Braun, we were talking to Montpelier, you must have some buyout sites we could look at for plantings or other things, but they're, they're not quite at that point yet, so, and I do think those are opportunities for the future. We'll, we'll know more as we pull folks together and say, I, I think there's an appetite. There was an appetite before July, there was an appetite after July, I mean, a lot of people's perception has changed when you're getting three storms in fourteen months, I mean, that's crazy. And so, I think a lot of people are saying, okay, I, you know, uncle, time to do something very different.
Thank you for all your time and effort.
Thank you. It's, it's truly my pleasure, and it's, I really appreciated working with Nicholas, and Janet, and Tess, and everybody we need to work with on the city, as well as the partners in this project have been fabulous to work with, so I'm hopeful we keep, we can keep working together, so...
You did a fantastic job.
Well, thank you, thank you. We, they all did.
Not so fast.
Uh-oh.
What's next?
Well, that's my question. Well, what's next?
I mean, honestly, put the North End on the Central Mount Regional Planning Commission's priority, priority list, you talked about daycare, doing something in the North End, whether we end up with a hundred and twenty-eight homes at Prospect Heights, or the eighty-five that you described...
Yep.
That is a huge, I mean, add that to the thirty that we're doing on Seminary, to the four that we're doing on Wabi Park, that's a hundred and twenty homes. Janet, how many homes have we permitted in Berry over the last five years? New homes? If you had to take a guess?
Two.
And now we'll be doing a hundred and fifteen, so I'm pretty thrilled.
Yeah.
You've done a great job.
Well, thank you, and, and I think...
But, but...
But, we got more to do.
We've really gotta, you know, now that, we've really got, in my opinion, we've got to turn our attention more towards the North End, more towards the recovery there, more towards the governor's plan that he spoke to us about a while ago, getting that on the priority list, and making some things happen in the North End.
Yep. Yeah, and, and I, I think, should or when, again, I'm gonna think optimistically, there is a Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery allocation that comes to Vermont, which we had post Irene. I keep hearing it will happen, it's just a matter of something happening November sixth, fifth, and, and then January, and, but that, having those kinds of tools will be incredible, 'cause otherwise, we're fishing for grants constantly to do this. And I'm just incredibly impressed with Downstreet's work and the amount of projects they have going on right now, and talking to Angie and saying, hey, what about Plainfield? She's, yeah, I'm all in, you know, let's, I mean, it's, it's, it's a regional problem, and it's a statewide need, and so I'm thrilled that they're able to step up, but yeah, it's, it's very much what's next, and, and I think the mitigation piece is huge, so the hazard mitigation work that's happening is important. The Tressle Bridge, the, the, the work you approved last time about your priority for hazard mitigation grants, I think is perfect, and we gotta just keep moving on that while we're figuring out how we're gonna house more people and retain more people, so...
Yeah, the governor wants to make a phone call about that tressle. Every bit helps.
I don't think that's that easy.
How do you know we aren't having phone calls?
Everyone needs to be calling.
We're, yes?
I wanted to thank Pat, but I also still want to say, I want it to be a council discussion about what our priorities are for building, and I think we need to seriously consider infill and the downtown, and decide that that's, you know, we need to decide as a council, not just say it's going to be the North End, or it's going to be Prospect Heights, it needs to be a discussion. The other thing I say, yeah, eighty-five homes would be great, if the city doesn't, so to speak, go in the hole to maintain the infrastructure.
How do you go in the hole?
Well, because you never recoup enough of money...
Twenty-four million dollars, and fifty percent of the project is paid for, how do you go in the hole?
Because year after year, you're gonna have to maintain that infrastructure.
I showed you the math three months ago, you remember? And I'll show it to you again.
Well, I, I just want to see it clearly delineated, and that we're sure that the city's not gonna end up suffering, because we can't really afford that. And especially if it, if it doesn't mean...
I'd be happy to show you the math again next week.
And also, to make sure that we take care of the neighborhoods that are already existing and in trouble with their infrastructure. That seems really important to me.
Like?
Like Center Street?
Like?
Center Street?
Mm-hmm.
Like...
Have we neglected them?
Yeah. It, it floods very frequently, because they need their infrastructure replaced.
Okay. Pat, thank you again.
Thank you very much, and do not hesitate, and I'm sure we'll see, and it's nice to see you in person and not on the Hollywood Squares, so...
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Uh, Council, why don't we skip to item, we have a, I think we've got our first reading for the Minimum Housing Ordinance, scheduled for seven o'clock, it's five of, so, well, we got that, this is good. So, we should be able to wrap that up in five minutes, authorize up to two hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars in ARPA funding to replace the BOR manifold. Mr. Manager?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. So, this is something that's come to the top of our list quite quickly, based on inspections we've had at the BOR. The manifold is what basically keeps the ice from, keeps it being ice, it keeps it cold. It's, the, the sys, the current system is at end of useful life, beyond the end of useful life at this point, actually, and from the inspections we've received, we believe that it's beyond this ice season will be, will be, you know, playing with, with house money. What's, what's the expression? I don't know the expression, but it won't be good. Whatever expression is which it will be risking...
Skating on thin ice.
Skating on thin ice, there we go. Very well done.
BOR, get it?
So, we have one, we have a, one season left, beyond that, we're gonna be gambling with it. So, it's a, you know, it's, the BOR ice is, is our most successful facility rental, as you see in the memo of our leases, of our lease revenue, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, so it, it is significant in that sense, if we were to lose it, it, it would be, it would be felt. So, we're coming to you with this, so that, you know, this is a, a manifold is something that has to be specially built for the facility, it's, it's made to fit the facility, we're asking for it at this point, so that we can engage with the contractor to prepare it, so that it can be installed after this upcoming ice season, and we're looking to use ARPA for this. If you do approve this, that leaves about one point zero nine million in ARPA remaining, based on a council discussion a few months ago. We are working on some estimates for you on some other, what we believe to be high priority one-time expense items, the ones that we had mentioned to you, for example, our cemetery software system, which we, all of our cemetery records are on paper and brittle, and so that is one that is also going quickly up the list, but we will have a menu for you to choose. We think the BOR one, because of the timeliness of getting somebody engaged, was important to bring to you separately at this point.
Thank you. Questions? A few of them. Go ahead.
Um, am I remembering correctly, we already did, we already moved the ARPA money over so that it hit the twenty twenty-four deadline? We committed it to, 'cause it has to be allocated by the, by...
So, my understand...
I'm remembering we did...
That we did like the standard deduction type thing. So, my understanding from VLCTs, we still have to make commitments just, by, by the end of twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, I was just checking that. And then you, this was definitely before your time, it was dur, during your hiatus. We spent like a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to fix some sort of ice...
Chiller.
Yeah, back in twenty nineteen. This is not the same.
This is different. This is the manifold.
I think that was the compressor.
Yeah, you're, yeah, that's what it was, it was the compressor, yep, 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 yep.
Not the manifold.
Yeah, this is the manifold.
This is actually, I think this is the original manifold.
I believe it is, yeah.
So, this is...
Yeah.
Well, it's original.
If it fails, you're in, you're in big trouble, but it, but they do last for, it's not, you know, they last fifty years.
I assumed it was a different piece, I assumed...
Yes.
So, it was a compressor the last time? Counselor Spalding?
Um, so, my question is, I recognize that the ice generates the bulk of our revenue from this facility, but my question is, do we, are we in the black for this facility? Is there any point in spending this money if we never can get into the black?
This particular facility, the ice, I would imagine, comes out in the black, because it's very low staff maintenance, right? So, it's, it's one person running the Zamboni while they're there, so it's, it's not a high-impact staffing, staffing...
I'm just talking about, like, does that facility, is that facility always in the red, because we don't make enough money? We can't charge enough money for the ice for what it's actually valued at to get it to break even?
Oh, I see, I see what you mean.
No, I think we've had, I mean, again, we could get you the numbers, I think we've had this discussion once before, and it depends on how you look at the facility. So, do you look at the ice, and do we say, okay, let's isolate the facility, isolate, get it? Let's isolate the facility from October through March, and let's look at all of the expenses. Electricity is very expensive. As the manager said, there's limited staff time, so if we took all of the expenses, insurance, electricity, we operate in the black renting the ice, so because we have the ice. If you look at the facility as a whole, and then you fold the auditorium into it, and you start folding in all of those expenses, no, the overall facility operates at the red, that's part of recreation. I mean, the bigger concern I would have, we would, we wouldn't have the electric expense, we wouldn't be spending any money on capital, we wouldn't have anybody running a Zamboni, but our schools would still be renting ice time from somebody, and our children who want to learn to skate and want to have a figure skating club wouldn't have that opportunity, so...
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think the measure, I think broadly speak, the hill loses money, the hill's in the red overall, but the ice itself in isolation is, is successful, and a lot of that has to do with Spalding High School Hockey, both, both the boys and the girls rent it, we rent to U thirty-two, 'cause Montpelier's ice comes out before the hockey season's over, so U thirty-two ends up playing here for a couple weeks. Black Bears Hockey takes up a ton of ice time, the skating, the figure skating club, not as much, but they're still a big customer, so the ice itself in iso, in isolation, now I can't stop unthinking, hearing that pun. The ice itself is, is, is successful, the rest of the, the, you know, recreational hill facilities do operate in the red.
Okay, so, follow-up question. It's an old facility, this is dying, we just replaced the compressor, what else could go wrong when we replace this with ARPA funds, and then we've run out of ARPA funds? What else could go wrong that we've just sunk this much money into, and we say, oh, gosh, we shouldn't have done that?
So, the, the next thing that's gonna go wrong there, which probably will be on the menu of things that we bring back to you, is the roof. So, and the roof, the roof is something that we'd have to fix, whether, whatever's under there, assuming we still have a facility there, right? So, the, the next thing is, is the roof.
I, I'm just concerned that we're spending money on something that isn't necessarily in the best interest. I, I understand, I had a hockey player, and I know lots of hockey players, and I know lots of figure skaters, and I, I understand the draw of the ice at, in Berry at the BOR, and I also know that we are a community that doesn't have a lot of money, and to spend this much money on something so that we can have it skate is really hard, when other people are having flooding in their homes every single time it rains, so that's a struggle that I'm dealing with.
Yes.
My single biggest worry about not doing projects like this is that so many people work so hard within our communities to build up these programs, and when we have one season without ice, all of that work goes down the tubes. All of those kids that have worked hard no longer have the opportunity to play, the people that have continued to work through those don't have that. We've worked on trying to build the food back at the BOR, to try to build some revenue. We've also put in the turf, invested in that, so we're trying to continue to turn a profit in that building, and I really see that this is another part of building that profit into the investment.
I agree. Any other questions?
Can I...
Yes.
Can I make one more statement? I think that off, having the opportunity, I've said this before, and I know that the hockey parents and the skate, ice skating parents would not be thrilled to hear it, but I guarantee you, there are more kids out there who play sports on turf than there are kids who skate, and we could make this a year-round turf facility, and probably rent and get at just as much revenue, so that's why I'm saying, do we need to spend the money on the manifold, or do we need to think outside the box and say, we need to do something different?
Yes.
Ballpark on a new roof?
Uh, there's gonna be six figures in it. I, I, that's the best I can do at the moment, but it will be a, a good size number. And I, I, for what it's worth, I, I, I don't disagree with Counselor Spalding, I think that the turf, the turf would probably do very well in the winter, because it's, it's a time when people are trying to find places to do what would otherwise be outdoor sports, like soccer, football, so I, I don't, I think that's a correct assumption. I think the, the leap is, you know, how, can we do that to the, to the teams, the, the high school teams, the Black Bears, that, that depend on that ice in such a quick turnaround? I think is a tougher thing to do, I think, without a transition plan for them, I think it would be tough. The, the ice is very competitive, I think, if we said to the high school today, hey, we're not fixing the manifold, you gotta figure out your hot, your, your space, I don't know whether they would be able to find the, the room for that, to make it up in, in that short of a time. If we said, you know, acknowledging that it may be right, that the turf may be more profitable, if we said, hey, in ten years, we're done with ice, we gotta start, you gotta start getting your way into other facilities, I think that's a, an easier transition for them, so I, I totally agree with your notion that the turf could be more profitable over time.
The other thing, the other, our, the other thing that I will point out is, and I, I don't know if it has changed, but my, my recollection is that the majority of kids who are participating in Black Bears, the majority of kids who are participating in Spalding High School Hockey, girls or boys, and the majority of kids who are doing ice skating are not Berry City kids. So, I'll just leave it at that. Maybe we could find that out, because I'm not sure that this is actually serving the kids in our community.
Good point. It would be good to know. And I think Counselor Sean Bell had a...
Yes.
Um, no, I'm just listening at this point. I mean, I, I agree that it would be hard to terminate it quickly, although hearing what you're saying, Counselor Spalding, is, is pretty compelling. And on the other hand, I think Berry has benefited a lot by having the ice, and I, I'd hate to see it disappear without a plan in place. I don't know. That's, that, this is a hard one.
Yes.
Um, I'm wholly in favor of replacing the manifold, and just to speak to Counselor Spalding's point about perhaps, we don't know the numbers of Berry City kids participating in the skating program, I think I'm totally fine with that. I mean, that brings people from outside the community to Berry City, they spend money downtown, they are participating and contributing to the, the positive revenue of that space, and tons of other towns in Central Vermont don't have ice, so they're bringing people to, and to Berry from other communities. Yes, maybe we don't know the exact number of Berry City kids, but people from other places are also contributing to the upkeep of the BOR by, by spending the rental fees and by participating in those programs, and to the tax dollars of the cities as a whole.
Well, I believe the majority of our ice time is actually paid by the high school. Last time I checked, that was a collaborative effort between the city and the town. Town pays their share, I don't, I don't specifically, I, I don't know the roster of the high school varsity and junior varsity hockey team, and whether it's fifty-fifty, or two-thirds, one-third, I don't know, but I do know that in terms of replacing the manifold, if you look at the revenue the city's bringing in, we recover one hundred percent of that cost in less than two years. I don't know, I don't know that we can point at any other purchase the city has made where we can say we recover the full cost of capital in less than two years. So, I'll be supporting this. Yes.
I think there is a larger question here, though, about if we're, if there's gonna be a roof replacement needed in another couple years?
Hopefully.
Hopefully. It's gonna be in the six figures, and it is important for kids in Berry City and everywhere to have recreational opportunities, is this the best we can do? Is this the best bang for our buck? Is this the best investment? And if, and Berry City kids, this is a very poor city, and those kids really need opportunities. It really gives them so much in terms of their development and growth, so, you know, I don't know. Is this the way we should go?
Yes.
So, I think we also have a lot of Berry City children and adults that get a lot of use out of the Berry Town rec fields and all of those, like a lot of our softball leagues, our baseball leagues, our soccer leagues often use those facilities up in the town, and I think as well... And I think as well that, you know, I, going back to when the river consultants are here, the amount of flood projects that need to be done in the city are tens of millions of dollars. Honestly, even more than tens of millions of dollars. And I believe very, you, you know, I, I think in a perfect world where we didn't have a flood and we're gonna submit a twenty million dollar grant to the feds, I think reimagining that entire complex up at the top of the hill would be a very worthwhile project. It's just the city be, partially because of the floods. That's just not the position that I think the city is in. And I feel very strongly that while we do have to do our due diligence, do our jobs, make sure that folks are made whole from the floods, do those tens of millions of dollars of projects on flood mitigation. So that Center Street, so that Courier Park, so that some of our other neighborhoods who aren't ground zero like the North End are, but still need attention, we have to do that. But I feel very strongly that we can't sacrifice the things that people see and use and feel in their everyday lives. Because, you know, in, i- i- if the city can't keep up what has been a regional hub for recreation, what's gonna give folks the buy-in to stick with the council when we do have to make those tough budgetary decisions to address the flooding? When we do have to raise taxes to address some of these things? I think that these, these real-life things that people think about on every single day are really, really important. And we can't, we have to be able to walk and chew gum. We can't make a decision between giving kids recreational opportunities or fixing the flood issues that are affecting Center Street. Because you're absolutely right, Counselor Stockwell, we need, for the good of our entire community, we need strong recreational resources. So I'm very much in favor. And I would make the motion to authorize two hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars in ARPA funding to replace the B O R.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
You were a no, Counselor Spalding. Were you a aye or a no? Sorry.
I was a no.
You were a no.
Yep.
So motion carries. Thank you very much, Counsel. Oh, look at that, we're seven fifteen, but I'm not aware that anybody's had their hand up. Counsel, this is where item eight D on the agenda. This is the first reading warned for seven P M. Ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash zero two, our minimum housing ordinance modernization. So Counsel, you did have a copy of the ordinance in your packet. This is considered a first hearing. So is there anyone in the audience or online who would like to speak to this issue? Counsel, do you have any questions?
Just from my reading, Nicholas, basically, this is the fines. And then we're now referring back to some of the state safety.
Correct. Yeah, so this is.
I just wanna make sure I'm reading.
You're, you're reading it absolutely correct, Counselor Wazak. So what we did is kept the fines, and we went back to the fine amounts that Counselor Stockwell had mentioned, aligned with statute. And then I think this will be a, a streamlining of the ordinance as a whole. What we did is take, the, the ordinance before had written the specific standards in certain places. We replaced that with the, the reference to the codes, which will by reference always stay updated. The council won't have to come, and there won't be confusion, et cetera, et cetera. It will always be at the state codes. So that's what this draft before you does, and obviously makes a whole bunch of other, you know, formatting, wording type error, corrections.
Any other questions? Yes.
It's not a question. I just think this is an elegant solution tied into the state regulations. After our long conversation of, of two weeks ago, I think this quite neatly sorts it out.
We had done it with substantial damage.
Yeah.
Safe as some trouble. Yes, Counsel Spalding?
Under, on page, section seven, ten, D, it says, orders shall be sent by one or more of the following means: email, United Postal Service, USPS, normal delivery or hand delivery. And then under F, it says, orders become effective immediately unless mailed by USPS. If mailed, the order will take effect three business days from the date the order is issued. I don't know about you, but I'm getting mail like twice a week at my house. So I'm not sure that this is necessarily a good idea because that seems a bit, I don't, I don't think mail should be an option at this point. It's not reliable enough.
What if people don't use email?
I don't know. Hand delivery then?
Technically, email isn't service. If you have to serve someone.
Yeah, I think hand delivery, because I don't think you can trust the post office. Or if you do, then it shouldn't, it should be more than three days.
Should it be the certified, maybe?
I was just gonna suggest certified.
Keep it to just certified?
Yeah, because I don't, I don't think you, is anyone else getting mail five, six, six, six days a week?
Yeah, no.
I'm not.
I know.
I'm not getting it at my business. I'm not getting it at my home.
Or at the school, like twice a week.
Yeah, it's not happening.
I think if the council is comfortable, I think we can keep it to certified mail. That way, there's tracking and tracking. Yeah, if that's, is that, I see a lot of nodding? Okay. So we'll put that in for second reading. And then I guess we'll, we'll, the order will take effect when received be a certified mail. We'll, we'll make the corresponding change to paragraph F.
I have another very small thing. Under seven twenty, C one, it says, the most recent adopted edition of the Vermont Residential Rental Housing Health and State Code posted on the city's official website and adopted at the minimum housing standard for the city of Berry with the following exceptions. And they're all crossed out.
Oh, yeah.
So I think we can just.
We can, thank you.
Remove that part.
Just period after.
Perfect. It will be even a leaner ordinance.
An editor, you say?
Yeah, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Don't see any online. Oh, I'm sorry. Samantha?
Hi. Can you hear me? I've got.
Yes.
So I just wanna say thank you. I definitely appreciate the fact that we were heard two weeks ago and that the Rental Housing Health Code is gonna be adopted as, potentially as the standard. And I just wanted to confirm that the inspection form is also, will be what is, what is used for that.
I can't speak to.
Yeah.
I don't know that the manager can.
Yeah, I see, I see the fire marshal on. I just, I mean, he's, Nick, are you able to address that question?
The same answer that I gave the last time we spoke is that there is no one hundred percent absolute check form when it comes to the minimum standards of the Vermont Residential Health and Safety Code, because it also refers back to the Vermont Bill and Safety Code, which then adopts in our NFPA standards for fire safety. It brushes the surface. It gives you something good to look at, but it does not give you a one hundred and ten percent efficient checklist to go by for a house or in a unit.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you. Did that answer your question, Samantha?
Um, not really. So, so the answer is no, you will not be using that twelve, twelve-page inspection form?
No, that's not the answer I heard. The answer that I heard is that there are additional items that the inspector needs to consider that are not contained on that form.
Right, so what are those issues? Because that's part of our problem is that we don't have very clear yes, no, you know, standards for an inspection. And so when we're doing pre-inspections in our units or when tenants are complaining about items, you know, and we go through and say, hey, it, it does meet the state minimum standard, or no, it doesn't meet the state minimum standard, and here is the deficiency, you know, we need, we need a system to be able to correct that and it be very clear for everyone, right? Regardless of who you are or, and that means that Nick would go in and get the very same result from an inspection as would Arthur or with Chief Cushman. Or even if Janet went in and did it, we would, they would all get the same result because it would be a very clear form. And I understand there are codes beyond what is on there. But if that is the minimum standard, shouldn't that be the form?
Well, I don't know that, I don't, I don't know that I have ever seen a comprehensive form when it comes to, a, a complete comprehensive code form when it comes to a building inspection.
Yeah.
I don't.
Oh, oh, yeah, that would be so, so outrageous. It would be, it would take years to compile that because they're so intense, and it changes so frequently.
Exactly. Exactly.
But have you, did you, did you take a look at that, the checklist that I had brought two weeks ago? Were you able to see that?
Yes.
Okay.
Did I, or?
So that.
I'm not sure who you're speaking to.
Yes, you, you, Tom. Did you, did you see that twelve-page checklist? Okay.
Yeah.
So that is what is used in, in all other municipalities that don't have their own inspection form.
I understood that, yes.
And if that is, and if, if that is, so if the Rental Housing Health Code is what is adopted, my question is, will that, is there a reason that cannot be the form to go with it?
Yeah, I, I think I can address it if, or.
Sure.
Yeah, I think, I think what the, what the fire marshal has mentioned, Sam, what the mayor mentioned is that you can certainly use that form as a reference, but it does not contain the entirety of the code, and you will be held accountable for the entirety of the code. And I see Nick, I don't know if Nick has anything, that he had his hand up.
Nick?
The greatest thing I can do for any property owner is do an inspection in the property and let you understand what it is exactly that I'm looking at. Again, I'm not looking at stuff that brings up to current code unless it's a one hundred percent fresh build or a extensive modification. We're here to get your building up to where it should be. Don't be afraid of us. We are here to give time. We're here to give suggestions. We're here to work as a team player with all of our property owners to create equitable, safe housing.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. Was there anything else, Sam? You still had your hand up?
Oh, that's because I don't know how to function on Zoom. No, it's, it's fine.
Nope, okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel, any other questions? Okay, an appropriate motion would be to acknowledge the first hearing and that the twenty-four oh-two Minimum Housing Ordinance Modernization has been warned the first time and scheduled a second hearing.
I move.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? And you'll schedule the second hearing for us, ma'am? Thank you very much. Okay, Counsel, we've got one more item. I'd like to have the manager address. Went to a meeting on Monday at one P M. A meeting that was called by Carrie Freiberg. She's the interim leader at the Berry Congregational Church. Meeting was called specific to that neighborhood or the businesses and churches in that neighborhood to talk about solutions for increasing incidences. They described it, and the neighbors described it. Increasing incidents of behavior, drug use, vandalism, break-ins. I mean, basically, quality of life crimes. As I listened to all of the speakers, the different neighbors speak, everyone expressed a level of concern. I think universally, Tess Taylor was at the meeting, as was the deputy chief of police. And there were concerns expressed to the point where people were concerned for their personal safety. Some of the churches were saying that volunteers don't, don't want to volunteer anymore, don't want to be there anymore because they fear for their safety. Universally, I think everyone agreed, everyone in the room agreed that the behavior has changed over the past six to eight months. That was the reference point, that it's become increasingly concerning, increasingly violent, increasingly destructive. And they were looking to the city and looking to, well, just kind of brainstorming solutions. So Nicholas, if you wanna take it from there?
Absolutely. And I have something to help guide the discussion, and for those online as well. And I have the copies for the council. Unfortunately, I printed them on somebody else's computer, so they're kind of cut off. I will send you a better, email you a better copy tomorrow.
Why don't you just, if you don't mind, put this on the webpage? That way, everyone will have access to it, and we can get it as well.
So just for some context setting, there've been some changes in state law that are contributing to some of the issues the, the mayor described. This is the text of a memo received from the state after changes were made in the last legislative session. As you can see, the, there's new specific criteria for the general assistance program. And it was, and, and residents now qualify for eighty nights of assistance. From certain points of the year, you can see on the slide here, from September fifteenth through eleven, through November thirtieth, and then again from April first to June thirtieth, there will be, there's a cap of one thousand one hundred motel vouchers that will be issued statewide. Residents who use this program will have flexibility as to the use of the eighty days that they were allowed. What that meant for many of them is that they use their flexibility straight from July one, which is now why a lot of people are, are expected to exit September fifteenth. That's when the eighty days will be up. And then finally, there at the bottom of the memo, you can see that A H S, Agency of Human Services, does not know what happens to the residents of the motels once they exit the program. So this is just to set context. This is why some people may be having these experiences different from, from prior years. And that's the cap. That's the eighty days of flexibility, which is resulting in, in, in people exiting the, the motels. And will be exiting further on, on September fifteenth. So the local impact this summer, there's been, as the mayor mentioned, it's been observed not just by people at the churches, but also here, city hall staff has noticed it as well across the street. There's been vandalism in City Hall Park. I, I know it's really frustrating for many of us. We had the downstreet fix the gazebo, and many of you may have noticed it's been vandalized again. There's been overnight parking at the auditorium and the cow pasture. Now normally, you know, I think people would be fine to acknowledge that people need a place to park, but that's also coming with associated littering at those locations. We also had somebody parking at the auditorium, starting a fire, which is not appropriate as well and dangerous certainly to the homes in the area. There's been increased incidences of litter refuse in public parks and playgrounds to the extent that now as interim facility director till the sixteenth, I've had to, you know, noticed it more because I'm, you know, having to direct the staff. And like, they're making many more frequent rounds of litter in, in, certainly in City Hall Park. Suspected drug use and activity. Unfortunately, there's been needles found in the back of City Hall. And then a lot of open containers smoking in City Hall Park, as well as back here. We hear from residents who come in to maybe pay a bill at the clerk's office that there's aggressive panhandling and some harassment occurring. Now, this is not, this is not just anecdotal. I, I wanna make sure that that's clear, that I think that sometimes there may be perceptions of that. I think overall, you know, I think I've mentioned before that in my first meeting with the chief, I asked him, well, is Berry safe? Berry, Berry is very safe. It still is very safe. But this is not, the, the spikes that the mayor described are not anomalies, and they're not fabricated. This is, this is being documented in the, in the reporting that we're seeing in our public safety department. In the fire department, as you can see, we did a comparison of the months of June through August from this year and last year, and fire department calls have increased by twenty-six percent. A lot of those are overdoses, suspected overdoses. And then even when we adjust that for, we had a dip in calls last year after the flood. So even when adjusting for that, we're still seeing a ten percent increase over last year. So there, definitely that, I think, tells us something happening, right? The police department data is even, I think, more stark. We looked at analysis of complaints near the people, complaints reported near the People's Health and Wellness Clinic. Thirteen so far have been called in in two thousand twenty-four. That is almost double what was called in in all of two thousand twenty-three. And I think even more stark, from two thousand fifteen to twenty-two, there were six total, right? So there's definitely some increase in activity there. Complaints about loitering and vagrancy. We've had thirty-eight so far in two thousand twenty-four compared to thirty-seven in all of last year. And certainly stark increases from twenty-two and twenty-one, which I think were probably COVID-impacted numbers. And then complaints at City Hall Park, eighty-one so far in two thousand twenty-four compared to twenty-four in all of last year, forty-one in twenty-two and eighteen in twenty-one. So this, just to say, I think this validates what, what people are saying is, you know, it's reflected in the data, right? It's not, it's not alarmism. It's not anything else. It's, we're seeing it as well in, in our official reporting. And, and this is not a Berry issue. I, I think we should be very open about that, too. This is just some headlines from the last couple of weeks. This is happening all over the state. I think many people. This is happening all over the state. Uh, I think many people, uh, you may, many, hopefully many of you saw these reports, but a Burlington pastor, uh, reporting drug use, um, uh, and, and, um, people basically staying on the property and, and not leaving. Um, that was a really impactful report. Um, uh, Burlington officials, uh, seeking help from surrounding towns for the help with their issues. And then Brattleboro, um, the V T digger story was, uh, really interesting, um, that, you know, they're, they're having, uh, similar complaints and they're responding with increased, uh, police staffing, uh, as a, as a result. So this is not just, this is not just Berry. I think it's also important for people to know that this is not limited here. It's not, not anything in Berry that's driving it. This is happening to all of our, uh, uh, neighbors as well. So what is our, our city response been? Um, so we're, we're basically guided by the principle there on, in the box that, you know, we're very clear with this at the staff level, uh, and in our communications and in our actions, that not all unhoused people have substance abuse disorder or engage in criminal activity. And not everyone who is housed is substance-free or not committing crimes. We are, that is like our guiding principle that, you know, there's people in between and then ranges and, and, and across the spectrum, right? So we're not, um, we want to be very careful in how we address it. Um, because we don't want to put people in, in boxes, right? This, this is, that's not what we're here to do. Um, so our goal, uh, when we use that guiding principle is to, you know, at first, show empathy for those who are unhoused and are in need of, you know, whether it be medical attention, whether they need a mental health intervention or support. Whether they need food or water or whatever other service they need, um, that's, that's our goal number one. Additionally, and I think this is also very important, we also recognize that there's an obligation to the, you know, roughly eight thousand other people who live in Berry who also wish to recreate and use public spaces with their families and be free from, you know, criminal activity near them or substance abuse interference near them. Um, and so that's, that's our balance, and it's a very difficult balance to strike, but, but what we're trying to do with our response, which is on the right side of the screen there. What we are starting to do, um, is we're going to increase police department foot patrols, um, in, in hotspots. Uh, and we're doing that with dedicated overtime, um, solely for those foot patrols. So there will be officers whose only job is to be on foot, going to the areas where, uh, residents are reporting incidents where we're observing it, where our data that I shared with you is showing upticks in activity. Right? So that's includes the core downtown, city hall park, uh, the churches, people's health and wellness, uh, and then doing the rounds of the auditorium and, uh, cow pasture parking lots as well. And this is, I, again, want to be very clear, the, the intent of this, uh, is not to go and root out people who, you know, we've had a, we had a very, uh, intense public meeting last year about camping policy, when we settled with the status quo. These foot patrols are not to go find people who may be sleeping in the woods, not disturbing anybody. The intent here is to, again, focus on, you know, that second bullet of our goal, which is to recognize the eight thousand other people who have a right to, you know, access public space without criminal interference or substance abuse interference. So these foot patrols are focused just on, on those areas. They're not looking to find people who are peaceably camping and not disturbing, um, other people in Berry. Um, we've increased litter and trash pickup, um, by both the facilities department and public works. Uh, and we are engaging, um, with local stakeholders, uh, and fellow municipalities on best practices and, and available support. So this is, again, this is not a, a, an issue that's, uh, happening only in Berry. All of our, you know, Montpelier's facing it, Brattleboro's facing it. We all have something we can learn from each other and, um, we're, uh, we're going to continue to work with our, not just municipal partners, but the folks that the mayor met with and Tess met with and Larry met with to make sure that, um, we are, we are doing what we can and, and following sort of the best practices to a- address these challenges. Um, so what can residents do? Uh, you know, if you, if you do observe some suspected criminal or dangerous activity, the, the, what you should do is you should call Berry City Dispatch. That's what I've told. You know, we have a, a view into city hall park from our, from where we sit, and so that's what I've instructed city hall staff to do. If you see somebody doing something they shouldn't be doing in the park, you know, here in city hall, they should call dispatch. They shouldn't come to me because I can't do anything about it. They should call a police officer, a law enforcement official who can do something about it. And that's what residents should do as well. You should not approach people, um, and you should not take matters into your own hands. That's the, the last thing that people should do if they observe this. Um, and just a little handy box there. So if you see suspected drug use or activity, yeah, call dispatch. If someone's drinking alcohol in the park or smoking in the park, call dispatch. If you've been harassed or if you see someone littering, call dispatch. If someone's taking out in the park, you shouldn't call dispatch. It's not illegal to hang out in the park. Uh, and people who are unhoused can hang out in the park. Uh, that's nothing wrong with that. Um, so I just, I don't want this to become a, you know, people can't hang out in the park because they don't, you know, look like they belong. That's not what this is about. This is really about, um, criminal activity that we've noticed an uptick of. And so if you do see that, we encourage you to call dispatch. If you're not seeing that, then we encourage you to let people be. So that is, uh, that is it. I'm happy to take, um, any questions. I will share that the, the overtime patrols have not started. They've been posted. Um, we are, um, we are monitoring to see how, what the uptake is on those, uh, and will, hopefully they'll be taken by the officers. If not, we'll, we'll obviously increase our escalations with, with, uh, making sure that they're taken. But, uh, they haven't happened yet, which is why you may not have seen them. So hopefully people will start seeing those, um, in the next couple of days. So that's it for me.
Questions?
Yes.
Um, I think it's a great idea to have foot patrols. I think they'll be a, a great comfort to a number of people. And I, I know especially folks at Tilden House and probably North Berry Mayor isn't on the list, but-
Yeah.
Those folks feel especially vulnerable, so-
Absolutely.
More police on the ground will be great. Um, and the litter pickup would be terrific because we're drowning in litter. The other thing I wanted to say or ask about is like the porta potties. I know that someone died in a porta potty. People are going to die of drug overdoses. That's just the way it is. But people also need bathroom facilities and I've, you know, I've certainly have gotten at least two emails about people saying people are pooping in the streets, which seems very, very unhealthy.
Yeah, I, I, and that's, you know, we, we talked about, we've talked about them the last week with the staff. Um, I think what we're gonna, you know, we're, we're also observing what happens at Courier Park, which there's a, a port-a-lit there that the, um, partnership puts up for the concerts in the park, which has some, you know, has some help for, for that, but it also, it also gets abused as well. Um, so it's a, it's a balance. I think I'll reevaluate it with the staff. I think our, our concern is that they unfortunately become, um, more places where criminal activity occurs, which again, counselor, I'm, I'm, I struggle with this a lot because so many times we end up making policy based on the worst actors instead of the actors who need the help. And so, um, I struggle with it myself, but it's, it's where we've landed now, but we'll, we'll reevaluate it with the team.
Any other questions? Nope. Michael Booton?
Yes, um, about the bike path. That is a area that I've heard some concern about. And I didn't see that on the list. Maybe it was there?
Uh, no, it wasn't on the list, um, but we will, I will have, um, police run the report. I think what we're going to focus is they've, we've, um, we've got reports from residents, we've got reports from city staff, and that's where we looked at the data of where the spikes are. So we can certainly have the police department look at incidents reported in the bike path. Now, if they're not reporting to police, we might not capture it. So, uh, that's why I think it's important to encourage people to, you know, if they see something to, to call it in. That's, that's what is going to help us make sure that these patrols are going to the areas where there is, um, increased criminal activity, um, happening.
Right, and I don't think it's reported there because I don't think people go there because of the concern.
Got it, okay.
I've heard that also.
Okay, understood. We'll, we'll make sure that that's part of the patrol.
And, um, you know, I think this would be, with summer kind of winding down, weather getting, starting to get a little cooler. Um, I think this would be a great time maybe for the city council to take a couple of field trips and have some neighborhood meetings and make ourselves available, maybe from, you know, five to six and start our meetings at six-thirty. I heard from a lot of people on Monday, uh, people who had not expressed concern previously, and when I say previously, during all of their time as a church volunteer. And everyone was saying the same thing over and over. It's gotten different in the past, you know, six to eight months. It's gotten different. I'm scared. You know, I, I don't, I don't stay, you know, I don't stay at the church volunteering past dark. I make sure, you know, businesses whose, who people are saying, well, no, I'm not going to come down there because I don't want to get out of my car in that parking lot. It's, it's not, and, y- you know, we mentioned homeless and la- I, I don't know if these are folks who are unhoused. I, I, I have, I have no idea. Um, you know, we haven't asked them. I suspect some maybe, but I don't, I want to be very careful about couching this as a discussion about homelessness. It is not. For me, there is a very clear and distinct line. Once you start vandalizing city hall park, when people work hard to fix the gazebo up, I mean, we've done it a number of times over the years. Uh, it was never vandalized the way it was this year. You know, every five or so years, you'd have to replace a few of the, you know, a few of the rails or something. Almost instantly-
Yeah.
-vandalized. And that, for me, that's the line. That's the simple line. You want to be welcome here? Just be a good neighbor. You know, if you're homeless, well, that's, you know, it's not fine, but, but we're certainly not going to ask you to move along. And we're not going to prevent you from enjoying some of the amenities that we all enjoy. But when you start, you know, harassing people, when you're vandalizing churches, I, I had never even heard of a church being vandalized and broken into. You know, so this is where something needs to be done, uh, so I just want to let people know that we hear you. Um, we'll be talking more about this, uh, over the coming months, and, um, hopefully we can get a handle on it.
And just on that last point, Mr. Mayor, if we could not-
Yeah. Yeah.
You just-
Because, you know, and it's, and it's not-
It's, it's just, sorry, I realize people can't understand what I'm saying.
I appreciate the response, Nicholas, but I, Teddy, I agree with you. We don't always agree-
This is not a homelessness response issue.
No, it is not. It, it has nothing to do, being homeless is not a crime. It's a tragedy. But when you vandalize, when you harass, when you break into places, when you're using drugs in public, well, you know, now you've joined a new club. So. Uh, upcoming business, uh, council would like to, uh, at some point, Nicholas, maybe, I don't want to remind you, but if we could get a real quick view of the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Just a real simple, like, literally five or so, okay, here was raised by taxes last year. Here's the hole that we're all af- you know, here's the million dollar hole we're all afraid of. Here's our contractual obligation, just some sort of-
Excuse me.
I just want to, want to start to get a little bit of a handle on that. And then I really would, counsel, like to turn our discussion, you know, there, there others have done some great work on behalf of the city, getting these grants submitted. Um, but we still have a lot of work to do, so I'd like to turn our attention back to housing at least once a month and have one meeting where we just talk about housing possibilities, whether it's infill, whether it's the north end, whether it's something big. You know, we've, we've gotten a good start, but we need to keep going. Counselor Spalding?
Um, I have three things. Um, we, we haven't talked yet about Berrytown water rates, and so I'm putting that back on your radar. Um, last week, or two weeks ago, we talked about, um, discussing committee charges. So I'm putting that back on your radar. And with the resignation of the executive director of the B A D C, I'd like us to consider if it makes sense to continue to support that organization or if we should use that money in a different way. So I'd like to have a conversation about that.
Sorry, I missed the last one. I was going to write it down.
B A D C.
Oh.
And whether we should continue to fund that entity or if we should consider doing something different. Especially with the resignation of the executive director. It seems like an appropriate time to discuss it, so. Thanks.
Anything else? Yes?
Um, not necessarily at our next Tuesday, September twenty-four meeting, but, uh, for early October, um, Counselor Wazizak and I had, had written to counsel to say that we were starting the, uh, direct conversations on the flood resilience plan draft that we had circulated before, and I'm going to speak a little bit in roundtable about other community outreach work that we're doing. Um, but that will, that should, uh, be ready for, uh, adoption by council in early October.
Thank you.
Um, and Mary, if I could just get something on council's radar, so we, I know for, uh, next week for sure, um, we'll be bringing to you, um, a, a bond for the Headworks project. Um, this is for the wastewater treatment facility. Um, we're looking at a multimillion dollar updates for that, um, and that's to, um, w- we're undergoing the twenty-year review of the plant, as you know, with, um, with the consultants, uh, Wright Pierce and, and then Aldrich Elliott. Um, and the Headworks has been consistently identified as the, the choke point of problems at that plant. So we've, um, you know, we, we've mentioned to council how we've isolated that for sort of immediate attention. Uh, and so we'll be coming to you with, we've, you know, Aldrich Elliott has done the estimates. Uh, we started working with, uh, a Sitzel page on the bond document, so um, I know it's a big one, so I just, we'll get it to you, uh, as early as we can. Um, but just want to flag for you that that's, uh, uh, coming to you at the next, uh, council meeting.
Thank you, yes?
As I mentioned earlier, I'd like to talk about regional priorities and priorities for housing, so. Um, and I think that the All-In Housing Task Force will be coming back with a list of priorities to adopt, but Tess is here and she knows more.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just clarify something that-
Of course.
Manager just shared, you said, uh, next week you'd be coming back. Are we confirmed?
At the next meeting.
At the next meeting, thank you. I thought I misheard, but-
Got it. Roundtable, considerering. For once, I'll pass. Counselor Guston?
Um, I had just mentioned this, that we're ready to move into the sort of public engagement, public response phase of the flood resiliency plan, um, for the city, which, as a reminder for folks, is a document that Counselor Wazizak and I have been working on that, uh, encompasses a lot of the conversations the council has been having with both internally and with, with a lot of the, the experts who have been coming before us on recommended priorities, um, to address flood mitigation and resiliency in the future. Um, it's had a couple of airings at council. The next, um, steps are to have one-on-one meetings with a lot of folks and what I want, I'm going to make a post, uh, to this effect on Front Porch Forum as well, but what I'd like, uh, folks listening in to be aware of is that for the next, um, two weeks on weekdays, Monday through Friday, that's starting the sixteenth, and then starting the twenty-third, those two weeks, either Counselor Wazizak or I, um, will be from eight A M. to nine A M. And I'm going to review this, but I'm also going to post it on Front Porch Forum. Uh, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, we'll be at Espresso Bueno. Tuesday, Thursday, we'll be at the Cat Cafe. Um, so please come down and share your thoughts on the plan and on other, um, flood resiliency priorities you think should be shared. And please also feel free to reach out directly for a meeting at a different time, uh, that works for you. Uh, and as I had said earlier, the, the goal is to codify a lot of our citywide priorities around, um, flood resiliency going forward so that we can have a shared, a shared sense of those priorities and a shared plan going forward.
Counselor Jean-Ben?
Um, I thoroughly enjoyed the basketball game, much to my own surprise. I was thrilled to know that our manager can handle a ball so well.
Were you watching the same game?
I was impressed. People were moving across the court pretty well. Anyway, have you guys practiced?
Once.
Anyway, I think it should be continued. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Wazizak?
Ask.
Counselor Spalding?
Um, I also attended the basketball game. It was very enjoyable, um, entertaining. It was, it was fun. Um, and the, the other thing that I would say is that, um, a week from today is the vote for the Berry Unified Union School District, and I appreciate everyone who's come out to vote in the past. Um, we are all getting very tired and I know that it's frustrating when Berry City continues to pass the budget, but I would encourage you to please get out and vote. Submit those absentee ballots, do whatever you need to do. Let's get the budget passed. And, um, if you have questions, please go to the B U S D website. There's great information there. And, uh, there's also a list of questions that have been asked and answered. Um, so maybe there's a question that you have and you could find it, and you can find the answer to that there. So please just get out and vote, return those absentee va- ballots, and, um, let's pass our budget. Thanks.
Go, yes?
I would echo Counselor Spalding. Get out, get out that vote and pass that school budget. And thanks to everyone who's working so hard on it. I see things on Facebook. I see things on Front Porch Forum and on lawns. Great effort by everyone. Really appreciate that. And so do the kids, I'm sure. Except for the ones who wish there wasn't any school.
Yes, the school budget. And remind me, let's see, our municipal tax rate here in Berry, we were up one percent?
Yeah.
Maybe, yeah, like around one percent. Berrytown, their municipal rate probably did the same. They're already, always pretty disciplined. If the school budget passes as presented, it would be a roughly one percent increase. Is that correct in Berry City? Three percent increase in Berrytown? But to do the fair math, the overall tax rate, which of course is what everybody works, looks at, would be about, because it's about a fifty-fifty split, would be about a one percent, uh, increase in the city and about a one and a half percent increase overall in the town. So this process has been a little hard to watch at times. I'm sure some people probably say the same thing about the council. Like I said, I, I am supporting this budget. It seems, it seems like i- it's not about the numbers anymore because- it's not about the numbers anymore, because we've passed budgets before, and people have been grateful when taxes only went up 2% or 3% or 5%. And so here we are looking at, you know, 1% in the city of Berry, 1.5 before people jumped down my throat, maybe it's 2%. I don't quite know the split, but it certainly isn't 5, certainly isn't 10. So, you know, it seems sometimes from the outside looking in, I don't attend school board meetings, and I don't serve on the school board, but it almost seems like it's become personal, and it's not about the numbers. And none of this should ever be personal. It should always be about the numbers, about the stewardship, about how good a job people are doing. And I don't see how the school board, regardless of how they got there, it wasn't always pretty at times. I don't see how we can expect a school board when inflation was three times that. I don't see how we can expect a school board to do better than 1% and 1.5% or, or 2%. So I'm hopeful that people put the emotions aside and put the past where it belongs in the past, get out and pass this budget. As we saw tonight, both in Berry City and Berrytown, we've got a lot more work to do. So with that, counsel, do we need an executive session?
If you want me to update you.
Just whisper on the way out to them. The rest of us don't care. Motion to adjourn would be in order. And executive, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.